Good evening. I'd like to call the city council meeting of the city of Port Ritchie to order this 25th day of March, the year 2014. If we would all rise for the invocation, please.
Evening, Mayor Council, everyone. We're in our 40 days of prayer, so I would like to pray from the prayer guide. Actually, it's to grant the gift of righteousness. I just want to pray that righteousness to rise in our city. So, Father, we thank you tonight. Your word says that those that are proud, their soul's not right within them, but the righteous will live by faith. And so, Father, we come by faith tonight that there's a loving God, has his eye upon this city, and he wants to set things right by his glory and majesty, that there would be peace and joy and love. So, Father, we know that his desire and what he's working to do, Lord, is to use this council, this mayor, and the police department, the fire department, and all the workers, Lord God, to just be hands-on, touching, to bring goodness and righteousness to the community. So, tonight, Lord, as we meet, we just pray, Lord God, for the mayor, the council, and this city together, that we just, one together, might say, "Lord, your kingdom come, your righteousness be done." That we seek you first, your kingdom and your righteousness, Lord, that the things the city needs would be added to it by your goodness and your love. So, Lord, we just pray your mighty wisdom to pour out tonight in peace and counsel and decisions to be made in Jesus' name.
If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Eloise Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phil Colombo.
Here.
Councilman Steve O'Neill.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton.
Here.
Councilman Terrence Rowe.
Here.
City Attorney Joseph Public.
Here.
And City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here.
Okay. The first item we have to address is the approval of city council minutes for the city council meeting of March 11th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Announcements. Mr. O'Neill.
I have none at this time.
Mr. Public?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Comments from the public? Mr. Brown?
Thomas Brown, 7436 Candlelight Court. Thanks to all concerned for the return of the five missing photos. I'm getting tired of presenting the following statements and questions, as I'm sure you are tired of hearing them. Prior to March 13th, I was told by a council member that the city attorney would email me an appointment date for him and I to discuss legal interpretations. I left my email address and cellphone number with Chief Brown for Mr. Public on March 13th. I have received no response. Maybe you just got those five minutes ago.
No, sir. Please let me apologize. I had some other issues that had required my immediate attention. That's why I wasn't able to get back to you. It is my fault, and I do apologize for that, sir.
Okay. What will code enforcement do about the three fences that are on and across the five-foot-wide perpetual easement at the water's edge of Lake Cox? What will be done about the fence that protrudes four foot, three inches into Lake Cox? At the March 11th meeting, I was told that my questions could not be answered at a council meeting. I was told they would be answered to me in writing. I have received no answers. What does the city normally do when a city resident puts up a fence without getting a permit? What will be done about the six-foot-tall white plastic fence that was put up at 7447 Candlelight Court without a permit and in violation of the part of the city ordinance that states, "It is further provided that any such fence shall be constructed with fencing material such as chain link or decorative wrought iron so as not to obstruct the view of the waterway by adjacent property owners"? Six-foot white plastic fence, you can't see through it. Is there any record of code compliance ever inspecting the finished six-foot white plastic fence? I would appreciate an answer to my questions in writing before the next meeting.
Mr. Brown, I think the only and appropriate way to handle this is, in fact, to have a meeting with the city staff, and that, hopefully, that'll get done as quickly as possible. But I do have one question for you, and that is, do you have any idea when that white solid fence was constructed?
2013, 2012 at the very earliest. I watched it. I watched Richard put that fence up.
You watched too?
Richard, a neighbor. It was in one of my earlier questions. Richard, and I gave his address.
And one other question. Was there, did that solid white fence replace a prior fence?
No. I have pictures of that house with no fence in that area.
Okay. You may want to gather those photos together, and if you could time-date them to, again, address the city attorney and the city manager and staff.
Okay. I have them with me all the time.
Pardon me?
I have those photos with me all the time.
Okay. The prior ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor, may I address Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Are you available tomorrow around 2:30 or 3 o'clock to me?
Yes. 3 o'clock should be good.
Okay. Could we plan on, assuming the city manager is available, if we could plan on meeting here at 3 o'clock tomorrow?
Okay.
So then we can hash all this out. Just good to have a time certain since we're all here.
Okay. All right. 3 o'clock tomorrow.
3:00 here at City Hall?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Pastor Lord.
Thank you, Council. Mine's just on a light note. Leonard Lord, I pastor at 8114 Leo Kit Avenue, and springtime's here, and we're just really wanting to bless the city. I mean, we don't have a lot of people to do it, but anyway, just wanted to share with y'all, we're having a free car wash and barbecue next Saturday from 10 to 12, no charge. We're not out raising money or anything. And I thought, Chief, I don't know how you clean your police cars, if you want to run some of them by, and how that works out. But anyway, as the pastor of the area, I just said, "We want to bless you, make ourselves available if we can help." And so, we thought with spring and the elderly people and those that are busy, maybe it'll help them get their cars cleaned up and get a free lunch. So, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. And I do have some flyers here. If you'd get the word out, we would like to be a blessing in the city, okay?
Okay.
God bless you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Carl Roth.
Carl Roth, 8031 Island Drive, Port Ritchie. Madam Mayor and fellow council members, at the previous city council meeting on March 11th, Mayor Taylor conducted a non-agenda monologue about the city's water quality. I had not planned on publicly commenting on any of these problems with the city's water system until you referenced my name during the meeting, which I took great exception to. I believe this was an important judgment on your part and whoever provided the information. Clarify for you and other members of council, the selected three-week period of data that you recited did not provide any confidence to the citizens of Port Ritchie that the city has a real grasp of the problems with the water system, but more importantly, just the opposite. Here are the facts that the community understands. On the Port Ritchie website, the only data available is the 2012 water quality report that states, "Our water system was in violation of federal and state water quality standards for E. coli for the month of July 2012. That the FDEP issued a variance for total dissolved solids on March 19th, 2009. In order to comply with that variance, the city is supposed to investigate treatment options, but I have not witnessed that once at any of the council meetings. Since January 2012, when Mr. O'Neill became on our board as city manager, we have had boil water alerts on average every three months. The last sanitary survey of the water plant and the base of facility report to FDEP was submitted in February 2011, and the last inspection was conducted in October 2012. The city water system must maintain operational maintenance logs, have a water sampling and monitoring plan, and provide monthly operations reports to FDEP that is supposed to ensure that our water is safe and there's some level of health department oversight. This is all well and good, but these logs, plans, and reports are all predicated on knowing how and what to do. FDEP has published standard operating procedures, which include drinking water sampling. However, the sample testing conducted at my residence did not follow the generally accepted best practices used by the industry. Madam Mayor, this is where your testing, this is where your monologue at the last meeting falls short. If the proper sampling protocols were not followed for any testing done by the city, these reports are not worth the paper that I've written on. Ignoring of public concerns by Port Ritchie sounds eerily similar to the strategy used by the U.S. Marine Corps at Camp Lejeune, when they ignored service member and veteran complaints of drinking water contamination at the base for over 30 years. If you're truly serious about demonstrating the adequacy of Port Ritchie's community water system, then direct the city manager to provide an overview of the locations of the monthly sample testing and demonstrate they reflect the extent of the total system supporting time grab sampling results. Graph the monthly testing of each sample point from January 12th to present to show historical trends and current improvements. Graph the chlorine levels introduced into the system and overlay to each sample point graph to assess correlation. Highlight dates, quantities of New Port Ritchie purchase water treatment plant filter maintenance and other maintenance improvements that may impact test results. This information then be shared with the city council and our citizens to provide a validated fact-based data as to the operational effectiveness and quality of Port Ritchie's water system versus just opinions and select data. Since the city is obligated to maintain years of data on its water system, this should be a straightforward exercise. Should you choose to ignore this request, you'll be implicitly agreeing that the city's water system will not stand up to public scrutiny, decision-shovers. Thank you.
Mark Abbott.
Mark Abbott, 7907 Washington Street. My concern is, some people may or may not know the history of Washington Street. Mr. Carter was his name, owned an orange grove there. He donated the park that was in the center there and all of that area. That was a dirt road in the 1970s. It was my first protest, 12 years old, but he donated it so the city would pave the road and the ambulances wouldn't upset their patients going through there at a high rate of speed. So, in the process of that, there is a strip of land, which is .63 acres, that runs along Washington Street into the, what we call the corridor property, the field there. In some of our previous council, I think we spoke of hiking bike trails and all that. What my concern is, is we've had tractors over there cleaning up by a private contractor this week, and after some discussions with the thing over there, I guess we're going to try to bill the landowner for that and so on. But the land is owned by the city of Port Ritchie. What we don't want to do is, we don't want to lose that $36,000 of land and give it in a quick claim deed to the contractor, because that's going to make an excellent hike and bike trail for the east side of the city, which usually never gets any projects whatsoever. So, I just want to make sure we don't slip through the cracks. There's a lot of history. There's really no deeds and things that go back to that part of 1960 to 1970, and that's kind of what's going on over there. It's approximately 12 to 15 foot long, all the way along Washington Street and all the way along Pine Hill, which would be very easily converted to a hike and bike trail like on the other side of the city. And at one time, we were talking about connecting New Port Ritchie and Port Ritchie through part of that. So, again, we just don't want to, we don't want to get mixed up here. Why do we have a private contractor doing work when we have city backhoes that could have done all that? And I don't know the questions, don't know the, because I haven't come over here and researched where the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Comments from council?
John King, 7749 Pier Road. I got a notice of violation on my grass last week, and I had it cut. After it was cut, I just kind of drove around the neighborhood and looked at properties, like the one adjacent to me. It used to be owned by the Pike Estate. It was sold in '98 to Christensen's. They sold it in '1112 to Colombo, the vice mayor. The Pike Estate used to get certified letters every two or three months from the city clerk to cut the grass, and they did. When Christensen bought the property, they stopped cutting the grass. I complained. Nobody did anything about it. Now, the vice mayor's bought the property. Still not being cut, which shocked me. Up Limestone, there was a piece of property where a gentleman had tried to make a row of townhouses here and a row of townhouses there, and the city sent him letters, and he cut it for years. Now, the Simpsons own it, neighbors of the mayor, and since 2/11, it hasn't been cut. I want to know why the rules of the city are not applied fairly, equitably, and throughout the city. Can anybody help me?
Thank you, Mr. King.
That's it?
All right. Bringing it back to council. Any comments from members of council?
I have...
Ms. Britton.
Okay. We may want to address Mr. King's issue with the grass, if you don't mind.
My name's Sherry Ewald. I'm the code compliance officer for the city of Port Ritchie. Reference to the piece of property that's adjacent to Mr. King, it is overgrown with Brazilian peppers. At this time, we do not have an ordinance to address the Brazilian peppers. Therefore, it's not a mowable piece of property at this time. Okay? Reference to Limestone, I will have to check that. I'm not sure which property he directly means. Reference to his property, he was clearly in violation, exceeding 12 inches in height, and so he was posted, and he had to address the situation.
Okay. Okay. I have one, I have one other item that I would like to bring up. You know, years ago, we did a drug march in the city, and, you know, we've been having a lot of problems. So, I talked to the chief. I've been discussing this with him, and on Thursday evening, if anybody's available, we will meet at 6:10 at the Port Ritchie Fire Station and go out and do a drug march, preferably by Limit Drive and then other parts of the city of Port Ritchie. And then, on April 1st, I would, I had asked to put on the agenda the opportunity for us to be able to look into the idea of continuing the drug marches several times a month for the next couple of months to see whether or not we can help to clean up some of the areas that we're having issues with. We have prostitution going on and drug abuse, and Limit Drive's a mess, and I'm hearing it from all over, even New Port Ritchie residents, which they're complaining. So, I just felt it was prime pickings because of the time, you know, to go out there, we're having the issues. It's time for us to, as a community, do some community policing. So, those of you who are available at 6:10 in the New, in, at the Port Ritchie Fire Station on Thursday evening, we'll meet there about 6:10 and hopefully pull out by 6:30. And I'd say probably do like a two-hour program, like we did 15 years ago, and hopefully we'll have the same success. And, you know, it can get ugly, I will tell you that. It's not always fun and games. We don't want to go out there and be mean to them. We want to go out there and, I talked to Leonard Lord, because I have concerns about, you know, offering these people some opportunity for help if they have. And Leonard, you came up with some really good ideas about how to approach them when we discuss things with them, and I would like you to really lead a lot of that when you come with us, because I think it's really important. A lot of people may need some guidance and maybe some help. So, I think at this point, I'd like to get going on it and continue until we see that we have some response and cleanup within the city. It may take, it may take two or three months. It may take two weeks. I mean, we were, it was pretty effective when we did the Grand Boulevard. I think, Chief, what did we go out there for, like, two weeks or something like that?
Yes, ma'am, roughly about, over a two-week period, I believe, we did four or five different walks.
Yeah, and it worked out very good, but I can't say that the same thing will happen over at Limit Drive, but, you know, if we sit back and do nothing and don't try, nothing will happen. And, you know, doing a community effort really, I think, is showing everybody that we're all together and that nobody wants this type of drug abuse and prostitution going on in the city. So, those of you who can make it, appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Mr. Brown has been here a couple of times. He's noted the fences. Just don't want you to feel like you show up and make mention of that to us, and we don't follow up on it. I have been on the phone myself. I know tomorrow you have both legal and a city manager, one of which I've spoken already, so I imagine you'll get some of that information that I obviously received at that time. And I hope this resolves the issue. I know you've been up here several times, and I don't know if you've been at previous meetings, but I've been somewhat of an attacker of the fences and attacked one in my own area that was partly up and had to come down. So, I had asked even at that time that folks really keep an eye out around their neighborhoods for things that, like this, that might occur. So, I hope you get this resolved soon. In regards to what Mark Abbott had said, our previous mayor Abbott there, about Washington Street and the hike and bike, it hasn't been talked about in a long while. And I know even Rich Rober, when he was here, had some updates on that every now and then through the committee meetings that he attended. So, you know, we would probably ask the staff if anybody has any particular information on this. You're right that there was a lot of talk back then regarding that, and actually, I thought also there was some monies that had been discussed as well in regards, at that time, about some New Port Ritchie projects, but not specifically Port Ritchie, I think, at the time. This goes back quite a ways. Water, obviously, has been a sensitive issue. Hopefully, this won't follow like dredging did for a decade, and we're still talking about it. I have said before, if we need to open up a workshop for this, you know, we've had the mayor comment on it last time. We've had our city manager comment on it. Tom, I don't know if you want to address, Carl had brought a lot of things forward, and I appreciate that, specifically maybe regarding any selective water testing, et cetera. Look, we've all had the emails. We're all very familiar with, you know, everything pertaining to the water. As I've said, if we need to open up a separate workshop to talk about this particular issue more, I think everybody up here is probably for that. I just want to feel that with all that we've heard from both sides, that we can just slow down for a minute and look at each complaint and really get a handle on this. That's all. Thank you. I don't know if you want to comment, but just throwing it out there.
Okay. All right. Moving forward. First item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Special event permit. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. We have on the agenda tonight a special event application request from Gil Dog for the Pasco Paddle Palooza event. There's a number of different documents in your packet tonight, including a site plan that demonstrates their request to use a waterfront park for overnight camping on April 25 and April 26. That overnight camping is for participants and spectators of the Pasco Paddle Palooza event. Looking at this, there is no precedent that anybody on the staff is aware of. We did check with the state with regard to whether or not the camping was permissible, and they ensured that there was no objection as far as the state is concerned. The site plan that's in your packet on page 14 shows an area that's identified for tents, an area that's identified for equipment storage, for parking overflow, and for portable toilets. They have estimated that up to 100 tenters may want to locate on the site. They do have a website for the special event, which I've listed in my memorandum. If the city council discusses this and decides to proceed and allow this overnight camping in the park, I would recommend that the following items be approved as conditions of the city council approval. The city would require that a certificate of liability insurance, naming the city as an additional insured, should be required. The coverage limits should be acceptable to our risk management carrier, and typical from my experience with Greater New Port Ritchie Main Street, they're $1 million per event and $2 million aggregate for liability insurance. The event sponsors should be required to comply with specifications by the chief of police to hire city police officers for security at the campsite at the park. No open fires would be allowed in conformance with the specifications required by the city fire department. The event sponsor would be required to clean the park of all trash and refuse and restore the park to as good as or better condition than existed prior to the event. Security should be provided to the city for cleanup or damage to the park. We're suggesting security in the amount of $2,000, which would be returned if there is no damage or trash or refuse that needed to be picked up. And lastly, the city council, we would recommend that you would assess a fee in the amount of $500 or any other amount that you deem appropriate for city expenses related to the processing of this and any other associated expenses regarding the camping request. So, it's on your agenda for your consideration, and once again, if you decide to approve this event and the camping request, we would recommend that those conditions be included. Lastly, and I'll close with this, there is information from the website for Pasco Paddle Palooza included in your event package.
All right. Discussion.
I talked to the chief about this because I was concerned about security. It looks like we're going to have a few officers available in that park through the night, so that I feel better about. Being that there hasn't been any previous precedent set on this camping, I guess I have to ask you, Mr. Public.
Yes, sir.
Are we opening Pandora's Box here? If we allow camping in there, are we going to have other people that, I know at times we had people that were staying there. I won't say they were camping, but there were homeless people and everything else in there, and we had made it very... We left them no question about the fact that we didn't like people camping there. So, I just kind of wonder legally if we're opening...
No, I don't think you're going to have any issue with that, because this is a special event for a set period of time. So, I don't think you're going to run into any issue with somebody claiming they now have the right to camp there.
Yeah, as far as the fee, I think, I know we had talked about this before, about that park, that anything that we did at that park was supposed to go into a fund for the park. So, we're going to have to make sure that happens, being that there are a lot of people coming to town for this event. I think it's an exciting thing for the city. I just hope that we can put this whole event off without an incident. I think most of... Um, I think most of our possible problems have been checked. So, um, the five hundred dollar fee, I think, would be something I would want the city to impose.
Nancy?
Um, I, I agree. It will be a big event for the city. I did have concerns also about security, but my security, um, is, is for the people around the park itself. We have, uh, our citizens who, some of those people in that area across the street from the park are elderly. Uh, I want them to feel secure, and that's why, um, I, I would hope that the police would be there the whole entire weekend. That there would be... Is that happening, Chief?
Well, if you'd clarify your question, ma'am, a little bit, if I may. The only time that the officers will actually be dedicated to that area will be the two evenings, Friday evening and Saturday evening at waterfront park.
Once, once they're in the park and, and sleep.
Correct. Those two officers will be designated just for the park, for the, for those two evenings.
Okay.
Uh, street traffic and, uh, pedestrian traffic around the area will be monitored by the on-duty officers. And we will take appropriate action.
Okay. I did, I did speak to, uh, Eric Soynen, and, uh, I said to him, I, I felt as though that, uh, if, if this program went, went off without a glitch, that would be great. I, I, you know, I don't want to see anything bad happen. I don't want a lot of noise there and, and, and rowdiness and whatnot, and that concerns me. But knowing that our police will be there, and Mr. Soynen is very responsible, and, um, he is there to, um, he even told me something about, you know, going over there and possibly cleaning up and making sure that, you know, it, it was pristine. So, um, and he's done a very good job so far in that area, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I agree with Mr. Rowe. I think we should charge a five hundred dollar fee. And, um, I would really like to have the, um, neighbors in the area notified prior to this event. So that they know that it just doesn't get, um, smacked in their face, you know? Um, let them know what the program is. And, um, give them some information about it. I mean, we could send some officers out there. I'd go, I'll go out there, you know, talk to them, whatever you guys want.
I would think by now they know it's coming, but I agree with you, you know?
I don't think so.
They, um, you know, the signs, et cetera. I think there's already a sign, uh, or two that I've seen. Anyway, um, the, um, liability insurance, obviously, check. Um, the, um, sponsors, specifically, we noted off-duty, uh, officers as well, and security, as, as the chief addressed. I'm going to add one thing to that in a minute, though, and ask you. Um, as we look at the, uh, permit itself, open fires, obviously, when we're thinking about camping, that's a concern. Um, alcohol in the park, uh, again, I think as Nancy indicated, you know, we, we, we've waited. We, we've seen a few things happen in the park already, uh, event-wise, going back a little bit. This kind of ignites it again, so, you know, uh, we don't want to say be careful what we ask for, but, you know, in this case, I, I think it's appropriate. And I'll say that, Chief, because on the, uh, on the permit itself, and it says overnight camping, it says, uh, five hundred or over. Well, I've been by that section, um, you know, I live just down the street there, and, um, uh, I've taken walks over there. And on any given weekend now, uh, there is no parking. Uh, if you look, whether it's Catches, uh, Seaside, uh, I mean, that area is jam-packed. Uh, you add to it, you know, this particular event, and certainly I'm not saying we should not, but, um, you know, you've got two officers at the park. I mean, you know, we've, we've only got a couple officers as it is out there. Um, you know, this is, uh, I don't know, Chief, what do you think? I mean, I'm, I'm certainly want things to occur. This is a great event. I think these people have done a wonderful job to, to plan this. Uh, look, I'm actually a craft beer fan myself, but, um, you know, right now, that area is, is very much changed in the last, uh, uh, at least few months, and parking, there isn't much.
Yes, sir. I share your concerns. Uh, the city manager and I have spoken on this several times. Again, we can bring in more officers, uh, for the overnight detail. The two officers per evening is a best guesstimation as far as what's going to actually be in the park. They will actually be, the spectators, as you see by your map, they will be parking in the park itself and then camping at another designated area. Uh, I assure you that if the situation morphs into something that we're not prepared for, we will take appropriate steps. This is a, uh, a bare-bones approach to this. We've spoken with the, uh, the organizers. We expect full cooperation from them, and, um, we will handle it politely, but we will take action if need be. There will be no alcohol in the park. Of course, people are sleeping in their tents. We're not doing tent searches or any of those kind of things. But, uh, we will protect the city property to the best of our ability. There will be walking back and forth from the park to the event, I, I presume. I don't know. Uh, we're going to, uh, the first night out on the, uh, April twenty-fifth. Uh, we'll all be there. The department will all be there, and we'll be speaking to these people and, and giving them, uh, clear direction. I don't believe that this is the type of clientele that we're going to have a problem with. These are sports people, and I believe that it should go, um, fairly well. We can, uh, respond to it in the extreme, and I prefer not to do that, and it may catch me, but I believe we've got it covered.
I know we've got the maintenance at the two thousand. Uh, as Nancy indicated, our number six here is, is five hundred, uh, appropriate in regards, when we talk about administrative, public safety, public works, et cetera. Um, you know, the cost of the city itself. I don't know if you can even put a figure on that. You know, I, I know it's here, but, you know, uh, and I'm not saying you've got to be some exorbitant fee. We want things to occur, but, you know, we have to remember that, uh, you know, we don't have a parking garage over there. And, um, you know, it's already during any weekend, very, very full. Uh, I thought maybe, you know, there's some other transportation, that they're going to be bringing people in regards to the Blues Festival that's going on in New Port Ritchie, that there'd be some transportation back and forth that way with the buses.
Yes, sir. They're, uh, they're using a, a shuttle bus. Uh, they have a, I know they have at least one large shuttle bus that they'll be using. I don't believe they're going to, they will be using that in the nighttime hours for the camping atmosphere. Uh, all of the events will be over with by then officially, anyway. Uh, we expect that the campers will be good little campers and in their tents and sleeping. If they're going to be rowing the next day in these competitions, we're expecting them to be athletes about it and not just open bonfires. And, uh, we will deal with it positively and politely, but we will deal with it.
Have we had any surge in noise complaints, uh, in, in regards to that particular area? I mean, I know, uh, you know, everything is set up.
We've had a few. Yes, sir. We've, we've had a few, and we've dealt with them one-on-one basis. Uh, we've not issued any citations that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But, uh, the businesses in that area, in particular Gil Dog's, has been, uh, very cooperating. They've, they've been understanding, and I know they have a business to run, and we want them to be successful. But we have a city to protect as well, and they've been working with us. So...
Thanks, Chief. I, I just know this is big. Uh, you know, again, I live over there. I walk that area, and it's packed on the weekends now. It's very, very packed. Thank you.
And I mean, I'm glad, I, I share Terry's concern. His original concern was my original concern is what are we opening the door for here? What are we setting a precedent for since we're doing something that we've not done before? But this being of the nature that it is, which is a, um, really a multi-city area event that we are just, part of our park is being used for, even though the petition, the, uh, the permit is coming from Gil Dog's. It's, it's part of an overall plan that, uh, that was my concern, too, is just can anybody just walk up and say, "I want to camp in the park"? And I'd say, "No", I mean, it needs to be part of a community event. It needs to be part of something of this nature for us to entertain using our park for this type of activity. It is a passive-use park, so I mean, that means it's going to have to be taken care of. The performance bond has to be there. It's got to be in good shape when it's left. The, uh, the police officers are paid in advance, so that's not included, obviously, in the impact on the cost to the city.
Correct. That expense is incurred by Gil Dog to the officer.
Right. It's sponsors directly to the, uh, officers who are working directly as, um, as essentially security for them at that point, so, you know, I think it's a great idea. I like to see things like this happening to bring more attention to the waterfront area.
The parks usually close at sunset, do they not, Chief?
I'm sorry?
The parks are closed at sunset?
That is correct.
Okay. So, it would take a special permit or, or some special, um, um, probably permit is the correct word for the, for anyone else to, to do that. And anybody that's in the park after closing is obviously not there legally. So, I think that part of that concern may be mitigated by the fact of, uh, the use that we have of it. All right. Do I have, uh, and, and like the rest of you, um, I think this is a great event for the city, and we all hope that it goes, um, quietly and peacefully. Uh, and that is one of the annual events that we have to attract people here and, and to use our parks. So, having said that, do I have a motion to approve?
Excuse me, Mayor, but if I may, ask a few questions before we proceed.
Okay.
Uh, I would suggest having a, a date where the insurance, the bond, and the fee are to be paid in a certain way. I don't know if you want to put in the, in the permit or have in the minutes what hours the officers are required to be there. Again, I don't know if it's a good idea, and so I defer to the chief. It would make sense having language, something along the lines of saying the minimum of X amount of officers or more as determined by the chief in case. I just want to make sure the city doesn't determine we need three or four officers for whatever reason, and then the applicant that's, well, no, I didn't agree to that. I don't want to, I don't want to pay for that.
Well, if I may, if I may jump in, and indeed, the, the attorney brings up an excellent point. We will have two officers assigned to that park from ten PM to six AM both evenings. I, but I assure you that, and I'm not hoping that this happens, obviously, but in an event, there will be more officers there to handle whatever situation may come up. But they are indeed hiring two officers per evening from ten, ten PM till six AM. At six AM, those two officers go home. The on-duty officers of the day shift will obviously still be on patrol, but they will no longer be in that park.
Can I ask the other point, the, the deadline for the insurance?
Yeah, I would recommend something several days before, so city staff can determine that the policy does meet, uh, the requirements that the bond is there. It just protects the city to have this, have a time certain of all these, uh, these requirements are to be met. Something within five or six days before the event should be more than sufficient, uh, to confirm that everything's been met.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
And I assume it is with the, the provisos we've talked about, that there'd be a, a bond at least, um, five days prior to, and, and that, um, the officers are, are present on those two evenings from ten PM to six AM?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the audience wishing to speak to this? Ms. Gray?
Phyllis Gray, eighty-one forty-one Aquila, Sand Pebble. Um, Mayor, um, good evening, Mayor and Council. You mentioned, and Police, uh, Chief Brown has, uh, said about our police officers that will be patrolling, but this is a combined effort with Greater New Port Ritchie Main Street. Um, are, is the city of New Port Ritchie providing any police coverage?
Chief?
Well, New Port Ritchie typically, uh, makes the same requirements that, um, uh, the sponsor of the event, uh, which is the Cody River Seafood Festival, uh, is required to pay for off-duty police officers in Sims Park. To the extent that there's a collaboration, it's basically working together with timing and, and working with, uh, Gil Dog, uh, to arrange for water taxis and other, uh, transportation back and forth. There's no specific sponsorship by the city of New Port Ritchie or Greater New Port Ritchie Main Street for Pasco Paddle Palooza.
Um, that's fine, uh, Mr. O'Neil. I appreciate that. It's just that I don't want to have only our policemen there. And I understand that Gil Dog and their, you know, a wonderful welcoming addition to, to the city with all they, what they do. But, uh, and I'm sure they're going to, you know, be paying for officers, too. But I'd like to see, you know, besides our offices, I, you know, it is, it still is a combined effort. And I really would like to see the city of Port, of New Port Ritchie have some presence at, at this event as well as our officers.
The answer to that, ma'am, is no. They will not.
But Gil Dog, but, but, but the point is...
Ms. Brett and I, uh, it's open to the public right now?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Um, no. Chief?
No, ma'am. New Port Ritchie will be patrolling New Port Ritchie that weekend. Now, as, as Mr. O'Neil mentioned, um, other units are just a radio phone call away to another police department, that being Pasco County or New Port Ritchie. And all of us, all the officers, have that, that ability to do that. But if your question is, is will there be other agencies patrolling and working around the Gil Dog event? The answer is no.
I guess no is no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Anyone else? I'll bring it back to Council. Obviously, to speak to the, the police presence, um, we're going to patrol those events that are in our city, and New Port Ritchie is going to patrol the events that are in, uh, their city, so...
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. And indeed, we have a thing called mutual aid, that everything is a phone call away, that if we should need assistance or, in several occasions, Newport may need assistance. We, uh, we cooperate with each agency as needed.
Okay?
Uh, one last question, Chief.
Uh, Mr., I haven't recognized you. You wish to speak?
Uh, is there going to be any security there during the, uh, the day at all?
Uh, no, sir, not if you're referring to the type of security that will be at the park for the overnight camping. The only security during the daytime hours will be the patrol officers on duty.
Okay.
All right. Any, anything further of Council? Any other questions, comments?
Just want to make sure the people are noticed.
All right. Seeing nothing further than we have a, a motion for approval, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It passes. Moving on to the next item is the consideration of work authorization for the inline storm sewer pipe repair. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. We have experienced a failure of a stormwater collection line, um, in the right-of-way along Grand Boulevard, uh, adjacent to a property located at seventy-nine thirty-nine Grand Boulevard. Uh, it lies under an existing driveway apron. Uh, it's approximately ninety feet of eighteen-inch reinforced concrete stormwater line and has a number of cracks, uh, and joint failures in the pipe leading to infiltration and, and, uh, collapse of the driveway apron. We have two alternatives when it comes to repair. We can either do a point repair. Uh, we can dig the line up, replace the line, or... We can either do a point repair, uh, we can dig the line up, replace the line, or we can have it lined with, uh, a relatively new technology, uh, it's probably about 10 years old now, uh, with regard to, uh, pulling a U-liner through, and it's conforms to the interior shape of the pipe and effectively seals the pipe off and makes it like new. Uh, in my past experience and lifetime, uh, I've watched this happen and, uh, undertaken this type of project, uh, a number of different times, and, uh, just for your information, we've never had to ever return to a situation where, uh, we made this type of repair. The, uh, inliner system saves the, uh, excavation, uh, of the driveway apron and the repaving, and, uh, it compares favorably with regard to the cost of the replacement of the line if we, um, dug it up and laid a new line and repaired the driveway apron. So what we have done, uh, we had this line TV'd, so we know what's inside of it, uh, and we had, uh, a, a contract submittal from, uh, Lane Inliner in the amount of $11,700 to pull a liner through, uh, this project, uh, pipe, and we're requesting your consideration and, uh, we're recommending approval.
Discussion. Questions?
Is, uh, is this company that's, uh, proposed here the only one that does this type of work? No. Uh, there are a number. However, this is a piggyback, uh, bid price, uh, that is used by the City of Newport Ritchie and the City of Largo, uh, and it's been bid and we're allowed under our purchasing procedures to utilize a pity, a piggyback bid.
Pam, as far as funding? Obviously, under the emergency utility, uh, as is indicated.
We do have the funds for this in the, uh, the stormwater utility budget.
Stormwater. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Plumb?
Yeah, I mean, I, you got an emergency repair, um, we've got a failing, uh, drainage line that at any point, point in time, if it fails more, it's gonna be more liability on us if, uh, you know, driveways start caving in and such. Uh, Mr., um, Mr. O'Neil is absolutely right. The liner system is, is the way to go here. It, it makes it, it's a new line for all practical purposes, and it's, it's the most practical way of doing it, so, you know, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve this?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Anyone from the public wishing to address this? Seeing none? I'll bring it back to Council. Any further questions, discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It passes. Moving on to item, uh, four, which is the 2014 Street Improvement Project. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, thank you. Um, this ma- matter appears on your agenda again for your consideration. We discussed this, uh, in early February, and I was directed by the Council to inquire the county to see if there was any engineering assistance that would be available from the county to the city. Uh, I've been informed by the county administrator that the county doesn't have the resources to do that and won't be in a position to do so. Uh, so we do have this task order again for your consideration. When we discussed this with the project engineer and Mr. Wasson from FDC is here tonight, uh, in case there's any questions of the Council, uh, we were concerned, of course, uh, as we always are, about project cost and the amount that we had budgeted. We have approximately $150,000 budgeted for this project, uh, out of the city's Transportation Impact Fee Fund, um, and there's, uh, ample funding available to, uh, pay for the engineering and the construction cost of this project. What we have done is we've asked the engineer to separate the task order into a base task order and two alternate locations. The base task order includes Olzner Street, uh, Bayview Street, uh, it, from the opening where the Nix Park Loop is, uh, to Bayview Street again. Um, the area where you exit the ramp, uh, is in a severely deteriorated condition and, uh, in my opinion, needs immediate attention. Uh, we've also included Knights of Columbus Drive, which again is in a severely deteriorated condition, and Deidre Circle. Um, and those are identified on a project, uh, location map, uh, that we have in your packet on page 39. The two alternate locations are an area on Washington Street from Broadway Avenue to Regis Avenue, and also on Leo Kidd Avenue from Pine Hill Road to 100 feet north of Siesta Lane. Uh, both of those project areas do need attention, um, and this basically involves, uh, whether or not we wanna proceed with them at this time. Uh, the base task order is in the amount of $24,890 and includes, uh, the preparation of design documents, uh, bidding documents, uh, any engineering assistance with regard to, uh, the project paving itself, and, and I wanna add just a brief comment on that. Uh, as the Council may recall, last year, we completed, uh, the, uh, street paving project in the Marina Palms subdivision, and one of the things that we always need to do as a city and as a public work department is make sure that we maintain, uh, existing engineered drainage patterns, and particularly on Deidre Circle and on Washington Street and on Knights of Columbus Drive, uh, we'll need to do some survey work, uh, to identify existing elevations so that we can include that information in the bidding documents and specify exactly what the contractor is required to do in order to maintain drainage, uh, patterns on the site. So the base task order that we have, uh, is $24,890 for the first list of four streets that's on page 42, uh, of task order number four. The additional, uh, the additional projects of Leo Kidd and Washington Street are $5,600 for engineering and project document, bidding document preparation, and $3,500 for Washington Street. Because this project has been delayed some, uh, it will span two fiscal years. So we can do all of these streets if you desire to do so, because by the time we prepare the engineering and the bidding documents on this and bid the project out, award the contract, it will span, uh, the next fiscal year, and we will budget for additional funding if you desire to proceed with all of these projects. They all need it. Uh, they, uh, are on this list because they're in a severely deteriorated condition. When we first put this on, we were earlier in the year, and we probably would've completed all of this within this fiscal year. So if you desire to do them all, uh, we can do that. So, uh, with that being said, uh, we recommend approval.
All right. Discussion. Ms. O'Neil?
Yeah, I mean, uh, in looking, um, at the base task order, uh, for the $24,890, obviously, uh, Pam, with $150,000 is what's, uh, what's said in the fund.
I think we actually did budget 300 and some thousand in that line item, so there's sufficient funds to cover this.
Um, also, the, um, alternate, uh, Tom, when you mentioned the alternate, uh, and those particular Washington and, uh, what was the other?
Leo Kidd.
Pardon?
Leo Kidd.
Uh, Leo Kidd, I'm sorry. Um, that brings it up, um, approximately, you know, less than $10,000. So a total of just about $34,000 covers the base task order and the, uh, needed, as you've indicated, uh, two alternates being the locations specified, so, um, obviously, you're feeling that those alternates which were brought up before, I, I'm not sure, we brought this discussion forward, it's been quite a while, um, why that particular was dropped at the time, I, I don't, I don't know if there were other concerns, but, um, uh, obviously, it's put together. I'm, I'm certainly ready to move forward with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree. Leo Kidd's been in poor shape for the last four or five years.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I, I, at some points, I thought we were gonna lose the, the street, and, you know, big cracks and whatnot, and, um, not sure about the fire station though. I really haven't surveyed the fire station lot, but, um, I guess it's quite obvious that it, that it's in bad shape. I, I really haven't, uh, honestly looked at it, but, um, the other streets definitely need improvement, and, uh, I wish we could do Orange Road.
Jerry?
Um, to clarify something, I've never instructed the city manager to contact the county manager. I think she misunderstood and thought we wanted to use her engineers, and what I was referring to is contracted engineers that they're using on 19 right now. But in further discussions with the county, um, I keep getting the same, same answer from them, and that is that we are wasting city dollars doing engineering, resurfacing roads. They never repeat, never, they told me, engineer resurfacing of roads unless they're tearing out sewer lines or doing some kind of major changes. I'm looking at this project and I'm seeing pieces of roads. They're not even complete roads being done. I believe limestone has got sections of it that are gonna be re- Um, I talked to them at length, uh, I keep getting the same answer. So it's $30,000. I think it's $30,000 we can put forward to a paving company, get the project started. I don't know how else to put it. I mean, I have talked to the main people at the county and I keep getting the same answer. I asked Mr. David Brown today, and he told me the same thing that he told me the last time. You're wasting money. So I can approve this, so. I just wanna get the thing, I'd like to bring in a paving company, see what they say. Unless we're gonna do some major changes to widening, or we're gonna start tearing up sewers, or changing the whole layout of that road, I don't see any reason to do engi- any engineering according to what I'm learning from the county.
You know, I, I, I'm, I would like to do some research on that, um, and, um, just get my, get answers on that.
With regard to, um, the paving on, um, uh, Nix Park, there are a number of issues with Nix Park, uh, in terms of the, um, uh, the, the launch area and, and so on, as well as the kiosk we were discussing and, and, and other things. Um, and it seems to me that, um, before we pave it, before we decide to go ahead and approve that, we want to put that at the end of the rank order of what we're doing rather than the first. With regard to Washington Street and Leo Kidd, uh, I, I believe our prior discussion was that there were a lot of, uh, subsurface problems, depressions, there was concern about the, um, the foundations, so to speak, on, in some of those areas. Is there still there, that concern? Mr. O'Neil?
Uh, yes, uh, and we would intend as a part of the, uh, uh, design work and preparation of bidding documents to do some subsurface investigation-
Mm-hmm.
-uh, on, uh, the, these areas to make sure that when we, uh, either reconstructed or overlaid the road, uh, that it would last and that it would be built on a good base foundation.
And with regard to, um, the requirement for engineering, um, is it more cost-effective to include both Washington and Leo Kidd when we're doing this initial, um, engineering study, or, uh, if we decide not to address those two because, um, of the greater issues, um, is it gonna be more costly on, in the future?
Yes. Uh, if we include it in this authorization, it will be built into the contract documents, and if we did them as a standalone project, we would have the work of developing a separate set of contract documents and technical specifications. So it's cheaper to do them now.
Okay. What about the necessity to have the city do, um, have our own engineering work done, uh, prior to going out to bid?
Um, I can respond to that. One thing that you really need to, uh, understand when it comes to an authorization is really a small portion of the work that is undertaken is technical engineering. There isn't a lot of technical engineering required with regard to an overlay. In this particular project, we have several concerns, uh, with regard to KFC Drive, um, with regard to the boat ramp approach and Deidre Circle, uh, regarding drainage and surface drainage. So we need to do spot elevations and design a pavement profile to where we ensure that the drainage, uh, is maintained. Uh, in, in the absence of doing that amount of engineering, we don't know, and we cannot specify to a contractor exactly what needs to be installed in the field. Additionally, one thing that, that is done, uh, and is the lion's share of the work that you're looking at tonight, is the preparation of bidding documents, uh, and the swift mud permit or letter of exemption that would be required. Uh, that is a, uh, a, a work, uh, product that is, um, completed by the engineer, and in the absence of that, we don't have the ability to prepare a set of project plans and specifications that level the playing field for a contractor. So we're in an awkward situation if we attempt to bid it and bid apples to apples because we don't have a set of technical plans and specifications. That's the lion's share of the work that's undertaken by the project engineer. So, uh, in the absence of that, we're taking quite a bit of risk on if we try and just get quotations to do a job, and we certainly can assure that the drainage is maintained, uh, in areas where we have potential problems. And you'll recall, in Marina Palms, uh, one thing that we did is we milled the asphalt in Marina Palms so that we could maintain the drainage before the overlay was applied. Um, and we have detailed specifications that plan that work and have specific elevations for the contractor to adhere to. So I would recommend that if we wanna do the project and we wanna be satisfied with it and we don't wanna have follow-up complaints on drainage, that we follow the proper procedures and bid the project accordingly.
All right. In, in any of these project areas, i- is there currently some drainage issues?
Yes.
Where?
Uh, at the boat ramp and at KFC Drive, there are existing drainage issues. Uh, I've talked with Pat Stewart and Steve Wasson, who is here, uh, about specific remedies that could be undertaken on KFC Drive. Uh, Deidre Circle is an inverted crown road, uh, and already has been overlaid one time, and, uh, to apply another overlay without thought to the drainage, uh, of Deidre Circle, we could create a problem out there that doesn't even exist today. So, you know, I wanna be thorough when we do a project. I want it to last, and I don't want anybody to have complaints. And, you know, as you'll notice, in Marina Palms, uh, when we did the work, they milled most of the existing asphalt so that they could maintain the existing engineered drainage out there, and that was a result of the specific design work that was undertaken by FDC.
Uh, is there a possibility that we could seek to improve the drainage in any of these areas?
We would always try and do that.
Because, uh, obviously, that is one of the ongoing pressing issues always, uh...
Yes, we, we, you know, we're going to look at that, um, and correct any minor drainage issues that exist, uh, where we can, um, keeping in mind that we're doing a paving project and not a drainage project.
Right.
Uh, but there's an existing stormwater system, um, along Deidre Circle, and so we need to be very careful- And so, we need to be very careful when we redo that road and it's in poor condition and needs attention, that we maintain those drainage, uh, patterns and that we, uh, design the project so that the water makes it to the inlets. And, uh, so that's, that's the issues that we face.
All right. And anyone from the public wishing to speak to this? All right, seeing no one, Ms. Britton?
Just real, real quick, um, when, when Grand Boulevard was repaved, who was, who would have done that project? It is a state route five ninety-five. Would that have been the state, the county? Who, who would have repaved Grand Boulevard?
Uh, I, I can't tell you about the parts that's in Port Ritchie. I'm assuming that Grand Boulevard was repaved when the city of Port Ritchie redid the sewer work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I, I don't know who did it at the time, but it was part of an over, overall project including the replacement and repair of a lot of the sanitary sewer that was installed originally in the city. I remember that happening.
Yes, yes.
In, in Newport Ritchie, um, it was a private contractor that did Grand Boulevard from Sims Park all the way to, um, the city limits.
'Cause, um, I had huge drainage problems after that, after that happened.
And, and that's exactly what I'm trying to refer to. You know, we, we want to, uh, work together with the engineer. We, we identify the problems because we see them all the time. And, uh, you know, there's work that can be done to correct minor deficiencies in existing drainage patterns that's a part of any street paving project. And so, uh, you know, in my opinion, it's, it's prudent for the city to have engineering assistance and not only engineering assistance, but once again, assistance in preparation of bidding documents and contract technical plans and specifications so we can bid this in accordance with our statutory procedures and, uh, and bid apples to apples so that we, uh, have no issues with regard to the bidding procedures.
Keep it on the up and up. I'd like to see us pursue again with the county, the, the Orange Grove paving, uh, issue. And, uh, you know, perhaps, um, they will be able to find some money in the, in the budget to, to cooperate and go jointly with us because that road is atrocious.
What I would suggest, at, at no cost, uh, and I don't wanna speak for Mr. Lawson, but, uh, that project has been designed. And that could easily be bid as an ad alternate in this project to give you the decision on whether or not to award, if indeed we were able to reach a funding agreement with the county. But I, I can easily request that they participate again.
Steve?
Well, I think, uh, you know, uh, some confusion because as he indicated, you know, look, I, I think we all feel and ask ourselves and, and maybe Terry's asking this as well, that, um, you know, th- this shouldn't be done and it's a waste of dollars, but we see roads that need work. So, that raises confusion when there's an outline as indicated, two eighty-seven oh fifty-five statute that addresses these services and how this is to be done under these, outlined under these task orders. You know, we're opening up a little bit here that I'd like to hear more about because this is where money gets spent. And it, it, it has to go along a process. And, and I think sometimes, and, and Terry, to your point, you know, uh, look, we had five dredging contractors in here. I don't think anybody thinks for a minute that a million dollars was, uh, so wisely spent. We could've saved the city thousands and thousands of dollars over a period of a decade perhaps. But when you're talking about these particular projects, and we see many, I've seen many come across in my time here, you know, there's clearly outlined, uh, that process. And where do you specifically go in best representing? And when you look at these particular task orders and there's a statute that goes along with, what, what fine line are, are we on here? And, and I'm open to anybody's comments 'cause I think this is an important, uh, uh, area that we're talking about. And, uh, you know, look, we've, we've got funding for this, there's, there's ample funding. That doesn't mean we should spend foolishly. But, um, you know, th- this is the reason that we ask the information be in these packets. And even, even statutes that relate to these particular processes. So, I'd be interested what, what others have to say 'cause obviously there's work to be done. And, you know, we don't wanna be in that standstill process as, as I sometimes see us be in.
Just for information purposes, um, I'm very familiar with the county, county engineering department and road and bridge. Every project that the county did or does, uh, has a set of plans and specifications that are developed along with their bidding documents. They have their own engineering staff that, that work to do that. So, most of the smaller projects are done by their own engineering staff. They are doing exactly what's in front of you tonight, uh, for that very reason. Because the projects have to be bid, uh, in accordance with the statutory requirements. And if we, as a small city, do not have the in-house staff to build the construction documents and the technical plans and specifications, that's typically something that we subcontract for. The only other thing you can do is get a quotation. And that doesn't address a lot of the very specific problems that you see now in the field. So, you know, to do it without some engineering oversight, to me, it's not a practical thing, nor is it a prudent thing. And keeping in mind that most of their work is done, uh, in assistance in providing the bidding documents and the plans and specifications. And I agree, that's to the point exactly. We, we've made that point any number of times that we are a very small city and there's a lot of things we have to contract out for that say Pasco County or many larger cities do not have to. Like, uh, St. Peter Tampa, they've got staff engineers to, to, you know, do design services, give the different plan, does do the different planning that needs to be done if you're gonna go out for a bid. And, um, it, it hurts. It hurts when we have to pay these engineers, but we can't afford to have an engineer on staff full-time that's gonna be able to engineer everything that needs to be engineered in this town. So, it just, it's one of those economies of scales thing. When you're a smaller city, you have to have some engineering done. Again, uh, going to your point, I can't imagine that an engineer's not designing the bid specs, you know, before they bid it out. Unless they've got an ongoing relationship with a paver that's just paving around the clock and they just send them off to pave every day, you know, uh, the, the county, which they don't. You know, I mean, they, they put out, they put out plans to bid just like we do. And not to mention the fact that, you know, they charge, um, assessment for it on top of that, so.
Well, I can always say I'd invite you all to talk to the county because this is something, I'm not making this up.
Well, I-
And I, I raised the question now with, with the Marina Palms paving, ours. Tom told us about how they ground off the top to maintain the drainage. Well, this is exactly what they were talking about, the county. You take off two or three inches, you put on two or three inches and you put it back the same way it was. You maintain the same drainage. So, why did we spend all this engineering money over in Marina Palms when we just ground off the top and put the road back? Do what you will. I know it's a, it's a comfort to know that you engineered this thing. But I think with some of the things that we're facing this year, the red light cameras are gonna be down, we're gonna start losing revenues. I think we better start watching our pennies. And I think these are some of the things that we could probably start making some changes on that we're not spending all the money that we pour out all the time. I mean, it's thirty thousand dollars here, it's thirty-seven thousand dollars there, it's forty thousand dollars there. And at the end of the fiscal year, it adds up. And I don't think the taxpayers like us wasting their money when all we're doing is resurfacing the top of a road.
If you, any of you have seen Marina Palms? The, the residents, um, seem to be extremely happy. It's dramatically improved, um, the area. I, I can't tell you the difference, um, having visited there. I, I don't know how a suit, a, a city cannot prudently have, have expert staff to assist us when we're trying to have or go out for bid on these projects. I don't like to spend studies on, on anything any more than anyone else does here. However, in order to have a job that is appropriate to what you're doing as well as something that is, uh, designed to do what it's meant to do, I don't know how else you approach that without having the, the documentation. We don't have a large staff. And, um, and I, in the, you know, all of the, all of you who've had a history with the city understand that in the past, we've done all kinds of projects without adequate, um, oversight at least, um, and engineering, uh, to complete those tasks. And we've, we've suffered the consequences as we're now looking to repair or, um, refurbish whatever those, those projects have, um, have decayed into. And we, we've got a handful that all of us could point to, including the waterfront dock and, uh, the hike and bike trail. And numerous, in, uh, Nick's Park Pier and so on, have, have, have not been up to the standards. We needed them to last how, how long they should've lasted. So, um, if there, if there is, um, any place, you know, I just don't know how you cut corners on making sure that the, the basis is covered. Do we explore other, other engineering firms to give us the bid package and do this? Do, do we, do, do you wanna go out and see if there are other engineers that would bring us back the same, um, study for, for a less expensive price? That, that may be an option. But, uh, having, um, the expert study done to, to go forward with the project, I think is essential to make sure that we have a project that, that is sound and, and fit. So, um,
I, I like the opportunity-
Hold on.
May I make one additional comment? Uh, I want you to know that what you see in front of you is a negotiated, uh, task order. Every task order that we receive, we look at very carefully and we make every effort to minimize the outside assistance that we need. For example, are there tasks that we can do in-house? Are there other tasks, uh, that sub consultants may be able to do directly for us without any, uh, uh, overhead on behalf of the project engineer? And so, we did that in this case. It's quite a bit lower than it was when it originally was given to me. And that's what I end up doing with each and every task order that we get and everyone that I've ever received in an effort to try and spend our dollars very, very wisely. So, uh, if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to help answer them.
Nancy?
I just was wondering, um, I'd like to, uh, contact some people in the community that I know that would be able to answer questions I have. I was wondering if we could table this till our next, uh, meeting.
Okay, well, you have a, a motion to table? Second?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, any, any discussion, any further discussion on the motion to table?
I, I would like to, uh, I mean, once it's tabled, it's tabled. But when it comes back around again, I would like to see, you know, if we have any, so many of those other engineering report, engineering essentially bids for this job. You know, if you go to some other engineers, do you have any documentation of what the other engineers had proposed? No, we did not solicit any other price quotes. Oh, okay, okay, as far as engineering goes, yeah, okay.
All right, I ha- I have a motion and a second, uh, to table this. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes. All right, the next item is ordinance number fourteen dash six forty, the water and sewer utility account ownership. Mr. O'Neil?
This is, uh, placed on the agenda and has been discussed on a number of previous locations. The ordinance was submitted, uh, to the city council for consideration of first reading. And it does allow for the owner, uh, of a property to open and be responsible for any utility account, uh, on the city water and sewer system. Bear in mind, this is first reading and as, uh, a part of this consideration, I would recommend that, uh, the city council, uh, review its utility account deposits because my, uh, intent is to make sure that the city is protected, uh, on any delinquent account or abandonment of any account. Those are adopted by resolution. If indeed you read this and approve it on first reading tonight, it would require a second reading. And we would have, um, a review of those, uh, account deposits in front of you and a resolution, uh, at the next meeting for your consideration.
Okay, Mr. Public, will you read, uh, by caption?
Yes, sir. Ordinance fourteen dash six four zero, ordinance of the city of Port Ritchie, Florida, amendment section four zero point one three six. Security required, provided codification, provided conflict, provided subjectability, and provided for an effective bid.
Thank you. Uh, discussion?
Yes. Ms. Britton?
This is something that I really, um, think that, uh, we need to join the rest of the world and, and get on board with this because in every other city, every other part of this nation, um, tenants can get, uh, water bills in their name and I think it's time we do it here in the city.
I know last time we had a, and it's been some time, so I'm just trying to refresh things. I'll ask Saul to say a couple of words on this too, but, uh, we, um, you know, there were some pros and cons here. And I, I, I know that Nancy has laid out some of the pros, but I, I'd like to hear about more of those cons as well. And that was outlined before. Is this as popular outside everywhere else? Because the discussion that we had before seemed like it maybe was partly. You wanna make a comment?
I don't understand the question. When you, when, what do you mean?
As, as this being, uh, in allowing tenant rather than ownership, um, common everywhere else?
I'm sure it, I mean, it all depends on the municipal, uh, if other municipalities or other companies do so, um,
You can say you don't know, Saul.
I don't know, I mean, I just-
Well, I guess what I'm leading up to is, is one system versus the other in, in opening up problems. Uh, and, and obviously those are collection problems. And, um, I don't know if that was part of the discussion before, but, you know, it's-
It was.
It was.
It was, but, but-
I don't know of any other, uh, governmental entity that, that requires the owners to, um, be the only one that have the water bills. This is the first I've encountered
Right.
in my experience. And, um, and secondly, from my perspective as a landlord, I would, uh, greatly, um, appreciate the tenants being responsible for their own bills. Anybody else?
Are we collecting ba- are we collecting any kind of, uh, deposits now?
Yes.
We are, okay. And we have the, uh, interest-bearing accounts set up for this, um-
It's a non-interest-bearing account.
Non-interest-bearing account, I'm sorry. It was a trick question.
But it, I, I believe we need to review those and they need to be, uh, updated, if you will.
Right, okay. Again, yeah, um, I, I'd like to see a lot more detail on what the deposits are gonna be and what the, uh, you know, the financial methodology is gonna be as far as, you know, what steps are gonna be taken, you know, upon non-payment. Again, we lose what we originally had, not that that was a heck of a lot, but we could, we could lean a house, you know. I mean, that was, that was the bottom line. If the water, if they ran up an astronomical water bill and they dashed, we could always lean a house. And, uh, you know, I wanna make sure that, uh, we've got some sort of protection here to go after people, you know, in a way, I don't know, you, you, you always got debt collectors and that sort of, that sort of route to go, but I mean-
But you lose a lot of money if you try and go that route. What you really need is the water department to be- What you really need is the water department to be on top of it and not let someone get too far behind.
Right, yeah.
That's why you need to have a deposit.
I mean, they move out and leave an open hose going. I mean, we've got a big old pile of money owed us at the end of the month and they're gone, you know. I mean, it's, and it's probably whatever the deposit's going to be, it's not going to cover it, so.
No, generally it's not. And if you've got something like that, somebody left the hose running, they just skip town. Unfortunately, you're probably going to eat that amount. It's not going to make sense to go after and sue somebody for a $1,000 water bill.
Well, we had before, I brought up the figure of $70,000 last time when we talked about our irrigation. I don't know what those numbers are now, but, you know, and, and I'm not disagreeing that this shouldn't be the case as, as, and, you know, I thought you would comment that, you know, I know it is popular, but, you know, the other fact that Bill's bringing forward is, you know, are there changes in what we need to do and, and, you know.
I would say there certainly is in looking at the deposits. And I'm not sure what the water department's policy is as far as when you shut somebody off, but.
Right.
All those go hand in hand affecting the city.
Saul?
Can I answer that question? As of right now, we have, we do delinquent turnoffs monthly, monthly. Basically, anyone with a, after the time that they have the, until the end of the month to pay the bill, then they have, penalty is assessed, they have seven more days afterwards, and then after that we do turnoffs. Anyone with a $40 balance or more is turned off. So we keep it very, very low. The reason why, the reason we do that is because we've been asked in the past to, you know, why can't we wait till it's at least $100 or $120? But the thing is, then we get complaints on that end, is why didn't we wait to do it sooner? So we keep, we keep a really strict policy on that.
Again, I have to ask, what's the benefit to the utility in the city? Basically, we're protecting the person that's renting the home, apartment, whatever it is. I just, I don't see the benefit. In fact, I see a problem that the city's going to get stuck for some money somewhere down the line and that's not the way to run a utility. I don't see why we're changing this policy. It's worked for us for years. If you absolutely have to have something like this, then I would say that, you know, somehow if it was legal, we could put it in the tenant's name. But if all fails and they skip town and we can't find them, that, that the owner of the property is responsible for any and all water bills left behind. But I don't even think that's going to be possible as.
You, you could do something like that if you choose, have some language where the city is first to go after the tenant or unsuccessful within so many days or however, and then you could go after the property. But to address one of the things that Councilman O'Neil first came up with, and looking into this, I only found one other city that I stumbled across that had anything even similar to this, requiring the property owners to cover the bills. This is very unique in the state of Florida. Everything else I looked at, it's generally the tenant, colleagues, whoever, it's their responsibility to set up the water bills and they're responsible for it. A lot of the cities have rather high deposits, some of them upwards of $180. And that's what they do to help protect from any losses. And then if you've got, like as Saul described, they don't let anything get more than a month behind, any $40 amount due, they can shut the water.
I, I just don't think it's good business. If I'm going to stick my neck out there for $10, it's $10 that the city should have had. And we are not in the business of renting. The people are in the business of renting and they make pretty good money at it. So why should we take a hit when we've already got a policy that's worked for years? I don't understand it. And.
Well, it's not working, that's the problem. We've had a lot of complaints.
I mean, it, it just doesn't make any sense to me at all that we would go this route. And we've had this discussion in years past and we've always decided to stay with this policy. I don't understand why we're changing at this point unless there's some possible benefit. And I don't see that benefit, so. I think the only other option is to raise the deposit and then that's a deterrent to people coming into our city because they're not going to want to pay those kind of high I, I just can't support this.
All right, anyone else before I open to the public?
May I make a brief comment? In October, we did survey other utilities. The cities of Newport Ritchie, Zephyr Hills, Tarpon Springs, and the city of Dade City all allow tenants to open utility accounts. Just from a utility management perspective, I can tell you that it's not an automatic if you require the owner to have an account. If indeed the property changes hands, it is not enforceable under Florida law to require the collection of an account from an owner. We've had to write a number of them off when the property ownership changes hands. So just with regard to your peace of mind, if indeed you do want to proceed with this, all of the other cities with substantial utilities in the area, including the county, allow the tenors or renters to open up the accounts as well as the other utilities, for example, the power company, Bright House, and Clearwater Gas, and other utilities that are in existence from time to time. So it's just, it's, it's a matter of policy on your behalf and you can do as you please and see fit on this. But it's before you. If you decide you want to pass it on first reading, you can do that. It requires a second reading to go into effect. If indeed you pass it on first reading, we will bring back to you at the same time that we bring second reading, a recommendation on revised utility deposits. I think our deposits need to go up and they're too low and they need to go up and we need to make sure that we continue our aggressive turnoff program.
Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak to this? Seeing no one, then we'll bring it back to council. Do I have a motion to approve this on first reading?
I have a motion to appro, approve it with revisions to the, with revisions to the deposits that we'll bring back in a second reading. So really, I don't want a motion to approve the first meeting, from the first reading.
I know, I just confused you.
No, the answer's no.
This ordinance doesn't, doesn't provide the amount of the deposit. It only provides that, that they pay a deposit. Do you, would you rather have?
I would rather have.
The information regarding the deposits and to see if we need to raise the deposits before we entertain this?
Yes, my thought was if we could.
Bring it back for first reading then.
All right, bring it back.
You got to bring it back for first.
Okay, I thought we could pass the first and bring back the second.
We could. I mean, that's what Joe was saying. Joe was saying we can't.
So you, you.
That's what I'm trying to say, if we pass it, pass it now, but then on the second reading, bring back corrections.
We've probably got a major change then and probably go back to first.
The issue regarding the dollar amount of any of the deposits, that is going to be a separate thing altogether. The amount of fees are going to be set by resolution.
Okay, okay.
So that's, that's a separate thing. So if you pass this, the issue regarding deposits and the dollar amount of deposits is going to be in a separate document in the resolution. So we could have, if you were to pass this on the first reading, I foresee us having a resolution at the next meeting setting the dollar amount. You could do what you saw fit at that time.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve this on first reading?
Motion to approve first reading.
Do I have a second? Seeing none, it fails. Consideration of resolution number fourteen dash zero one, Nyx Park Boat Ramp Replacement Funding Application. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, this is a resolution that's in front of you that would authorize the city manager to submit for a Florida Boating Improvement Grant in the amount of $100,000. The city of Port Ritchie received a grant from the Boating Improvement Fund in the year 2000 to reconstruct the Nyx Park Boat Ramp. There are some repairs that are going to be required on the ramp. In my conversations with FWC, the window for application is open at this time. We could submit a grant application. We've done some of the work already. If indeed you want to approve this resolution, I've been told that the funding applications are highly scrutinized and that the competition is pretty fierce for any of the grants. And so we can apply and all they can do is say no. I would recommend that we approve this and we put in an application and it can't hurt us.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion?
If I could just quickly read the title, I don't want to forget that.
Okay.
Resolution fourteen dash zero one, a resolution authorizing application to the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission for the Florida Boating Improvement Program Grant in the amount of $100,000.
Okay. Any, any discussion?
I'm wondering right now, this brings me right back to the discussions we've had before. Joe and I have touched on it lightly and, and, and Mr. O'Neil, we spoke on it too, is that it looks like we're, we are soliciting a grant that's exactly like the grant that we're questioning that's keeping us from doing what we want at Nyx Park. That this, it's, you know, whereas the Boating Improvement Program Administration, the FWC Commission, great assistance developing public launching facilities, whereas Port Ritchie, whereas, whereas, whereas. You know, I'm getting the feeling with that question that we keep pushing, or I keep asking, where's the thing that says that we can't? And I'll, Joe's raising his finger, so I'll let you speak, Joe.
Well, I had made a public records request to the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission and they did respond to it late last week. I've got a set of three documents because I asked them for anything that the city and them had entered into regarding Nyx Park and they have provided me with three documents. I have not had an opportunity to review those documents, but I do have the documents in hand now.
Okay.
So I will be able to provide some sort of answer by the next meeting regarding this. So I do have the documents that we are unable to locate in our vault.
Which is great to see, and I, I look forward to seeing them, which makes me wonder now, should we go forward with this prior to seeing that? And I understand that, you know, this is just an application. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're getting the money and there's a window that's of a limited duration and the money's highly contested or competed for. So I understand there's a lot to be said for jumping and at least throwing our hat out there and say, hey, we'd like this hundred grand. But I'd also hate for us to find out that it's, puts us right back where we were before.
Well, you could, even if you were to apply and should the city be giving the grant, you could refuse the grant if it's determined that you don't want to agree to those terms and conditions, you could back out. I don't know how wide of a window there is.
Right.
I would just hate to see passing it up at the window.
I hate to see it too, but, you know, I'd like to know the details of this before we accept it, you know, as, as far as that goes.
Well, you would. The window on this closes April three.
Right, which of course is right around the corner.
I've had some phone conversations with FWC. I've looked at the documentation and the grant window is a 20-year timeframe for the grant previously entered into with the city of Port Ritchie. Here, this doesn't represent any commitment by the city. If indeed we did receive favorable approval, you would have a grant agreement in front of you at one point between the city and FWC for the grant amount. So it doesn't represent a commitment. I just would hate to see the window come and go without at least an application in their office.
Sure, sure, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public wishing to address this?
Matthew Todd, five one three, Mallett Drive.
Would you wait till you get to the podium to?
Matthew Todd, Mallett Drive, five one three. As far as the boat ramp goes, we don't need no more grants. What we need to do is, we need to put a system where charging people to use that boat ramp. Residents of Port Ritchie can't even use that boat ramp. Everybody from all the other towns are using it. So what the thing is, is our businesses, they need our help and our support and the people that have water fronts need our support. So what we need to do is charge people that's coming in this town with a sticker to put on their vehicle and they pay it in advance and have the patrols, the patrolmen go in there to patrol it to make sure that the money, that they have the sticker on the vehicle or it gets towed. Because this money can go toward dredging and helping the dredging along the businesses and help the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Priest, 5100 Sunset Boulevard, admiring members of council. I think your city attorney's already spoke to this in here. Do you ask for the money you don't want? It just makes sense. If you got it, then you can decide what you want to do with it at that stage. You know, I don't believe in handcuffing ourselves either, but I don't believe you, nobody has seen the acceptance of the bid package yet either, the grant package yet. So, you know, why not go ahead and get it, review it, as long as it doesn't handcuff you to any stage, you know, that where you can't go ahead and put a kiosk in, whatever the case may be. It just makes good sense to go ahead and take the step forward. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, bringing it back to council. We have a motion and a second for approval of this resolution. Any further discussion?
I would just say we're still addressing the question, as Mr. Todd had mentioned, with charging, and that question's been asked numerous times here. We're close to resolving that, I think, with the reference to documents, et cetera, so.
Exactly, and this is, what, what, the charging issue is separate apart from the improvements we need to, to make here. And if we've got state money to improve it, we, we still have the, the fee issue to consider. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Next item is consideration of resolution number fourteen dash two, the temporary irrigation rate reduction. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, this resolution in front of you tonight formalizes your consideration and action at the meeting of March 11. It reduces for a four-month period the irrigation rates within the city for a new tier, which is from zero to 8,000 gallons. The tier of 8,001 to 12,000 gallons would remain at $9.12. The irrigation rates outside the city for the first tier, which are subject to a 25% surcharge, would be 8.76 per thousand gallons and they also would remain at 11.40 per thousand gallons for the tier from 8,001 to 12,000 gallons. So it's in front of you for your consideration. I believe the city attorney will read this by title.
Resolution fourteen dash zero two, the resolution of the city of Port Ritchie, Florida, temporarily reducing existing city irrigation rate for city utility cuts for a period of four months, providing for severability, providing for conflict and ineffective.
Okay.
One point, if I may, there seems to be a section missing in the case termination date. It does reference a four-month period in the title, but I do not see it referenced. Yeah, I believe there was section five from the way that that disappeared through, so you need to address that minor addition.
Okay, so you need a section fi, five, which says termination date?
Yes, which could be whatever, I don't know what date works easiest for the utility department, but I want to make sure we have that in the body of the resolution.
This is effective date for the billing cycle of April 2014, so if we've got a four-month, we, we look at.
Last billing cycle of August.
Saul?
One moment.
Your direction was a four-month temporary reduction, so that would be April, May, June, and July, and the previous rates would go back into effect in August.
Yes, I concur with that.
Okay.
And what I would recommend. And what I would recommend to you is that you could approve this resolution with the condition that it be for a four-month period, provided that the city attorney agrees with that. I don't think we need to bring this back for another meeting.
No, I think we can make that change now. We could probably change the section four to read something. The resolution shall become effective for the billing cycle of April 2004.
Through July inclusive, or for a four-month, for a four-month period commencing on April 2014.
I like that.
Through July 2014?
That'll work, yes.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with revision of the date.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this? Seeing none, bring it back to council. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Item number eight, rescheduling the April eighth city council meeting. Mr. O'Neil?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What?
Well, I mean, as, just as a point, both issues for these meetings is in the charter and in the code. There's really no need for us to do anything. We did this last year, too. Under section two dash seventy-six, it says, however, that when the day fixed for any regular meeting, a city council falls upon a day designated by law as a legal or national holiday, or a day on which a national, state, or county or municipal election is to be held, such meetings shall be held at the same hour on the next succeeding day, not a holiday of election day. So that's already in, that's in the charter. And in the code, it says, under new members, on the first Monday after the election, the new council member shall be sworn in office, and an organizational meeting shall be conducted for the purpose of acquainting the new members with procedures and transferring authority from members being replaced. So I mean, it's already in the code, I don't see any point in, there's, there's really nothing to be done there.
Mr. O'Neil?
Near as I can say.
I would just say that certainly you were aware of that, and it's up to you, if you want to change it, you can, you certainly don't have to. It would, when Tammy and I talked about this, I think our intent was to put it in front of you to see whether or not that you wanted to come here on an additional night. If you do, then we'll hold a meeting the next day on the ninth. If you want to move it to the fourteenth after the swearing-in ceremony, we certainly can do that. So it's at your discretion.
I think it's in the charter, and I think that we need to abide by those provisions, those historically have always been the way we've done it.
We will do that.
Okay. All right, that concludes the agenda for this evening. There's no further business?
I just want to make sure, I didn't know if Tammy had heard, on the irrigation rate reduction, I was a nay. I want to be concise with my other vote.
I didn't hear you, thank you, I didn't hear you, sir.
That's all right. I didn't think you did, so, thank you.
All right, anything else? We stand adjourned.
Adjourned.